Good morning, folks.
Hey, Bill, I think that you're, hi, I think that your uh clock is a little bit fast on your machine. Cause on, right now it says eight fifty-nine on mine and it says eight fifty-nine on my phone, just to let you know. I noticed the other night that you were about three or four minutes faster than that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just looking at my watch too and I'm showing eight fifty-seven on my watch, which is the satellite watch. And in my computer, we're showing nine oh two. So you're right. I don't know why that's happening.
Janet.
Hi, good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, Janet.
Hey, Roger.
Good morning.
Based on the adjustment on the uh on our times, we'll give it a couple more minutes, see if anybody else joining us.
You said honey plus anything else? Anything else besides the honey?
No.
Okay, well, I've got nine oh one now on my watch. And on my computer, it says nine oh five, so.
And mine says nine oh three and my phone says nine oh three. At least I've got two that are consistent here.
Yeah, well, I've got, I've got three and they're all out of line. But anyway, I will call the meeting to order at nine oh one. And members present are Roger Phillips, Catherine Silversmith and myself. And I see one guest, Janet Bellamy. Am I missing anybody? Okay, thank you very much. And, and thank you for on relatively short notice for your attending today, my fellow selectmen. What my intention is do is, is just do some general discussions of things. And as you know, I am scheduled to do a presentation to the Board of Finance of our budget on next Thursday. And at this point, and I'm, I'm open for input, my intention has been not to make any recommendations on cuts to our government side of the budget. And my rationale on that, and I, I believe it's probably different from what past experience has been, but I would be more comfortable. And, and we could certainly discuss potential cuts. But formalizing any recommendations on cuts to any of our agencies or departments, pending receipt of having an opportunity to look at the big picture. Having the Board of Education budget in, I know they met last Thursday. I have seen nothing documented from them. I've heard they're going for a roughly between a seven and a seven and a half percent increase. We've seen nothing formal yet from E O Smith. Although I did, I believe I, I got a worksheet from them this week. I think it's good news, because I think based on what we were anticipating from last year's budget, we anticipated a somewhat of a major increase there. But what I've got from them, and again, again, it's not formalized, but the superintendent's assistant forward on Ashridge share. As it sits right now, increase equates to a one point three percent increase. And dollar wise, it's under fifty thousand dollars. It's forty-six thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars. So I think that's from what I was anticipating, I think that's probably good news. Now, the our capital improvements committee, we've had three meetings over the past three weeks. And of course, they are strictly an advisory committee. But they've said, made certain, certain recommendations and did you folks, Catherine, Roger, did you receive an update from, from Christine yesterday? I've got an update on, on the spreadsheet. And again, it's a working document dated yesterday at five forty-three.
Yes, I've got to pull it up on my computer. I saved it on my computer. I couldn't tell if it was complete, or if it was just, you know, more in the process, you know, that they're going through things. I didn't see something that said it was finalized.
Well, the, the only thing that the, and, and again, recognizing their advisory board, the only thing that they did pass at last Wednesday, and nothing has been changed on that sheet. We did, there were a couple of adjustments made to our proposed ARPA funding items. But nothing has changed from, they made a recommendation to go ahead with the out of the town budget. C N R or whatever, those funds from what you see on the sheet in front of you. And they made
So I see question marks. I see question marks in the ARPA funding, so I didn't know.
Yeah, the, the ARPA funding, as you're probably aware of, is, is, is more or less not part of the budget. But was part of the considerations that I brought up with the, with the bill, with the capital improvement committee. Cause I thought that they go hand in hand and we had to have a, a general idea, but the, the budget items that we're talking about are in the first column.
Second column.
Excuse me, second column, highlighted on the first page.
So can you, let's see.
And, and to be honest with you, I thought that we would have more of a finalized sheet that we could review today until the Board of Finance meeting last Thursday, which they absolutely didn't do anything.
I don't understand. They didn't do anything. What are you referring to? In the Board of Finance?
There, there were going to be considerations of going from the non-lapsing fund, changing the cap from one percent to two percent.
Right. There wouldn't be anything, that, that seems like a fairly simple thing to do.
Well, I, I would, I'd agree with you, but it turned out that it wasn't and seemed more, much more comfortable, complicated. And they didn't do anything regarding that. Much to my dismay, but that's the way it was. And, and I understand that they, they, they didn't table, but they're going to postpone until their next meeting on the seventeenth for further consideration. And because
Yeah. Did they say why?
I'd rather you see their minutes.
No, I'll watch the video because the minutes, their minutes don't match their video.
There, there were members on the board, despite my recommendations and, and, and support of, of going with the two percent. That felt that if they made that change in the policy and what they were going with the discussions and I'm going to give you just my, as, as, as an observer, Catherine, my perceptions of what was being discussed. So it's not carved in stone, but and it was a long aggravating meeting. But what they were considering was not changing the policy regard, our policy regarding how the monies can be spent in the non-lapsing fund differ from the state policy. The state policy has changed their language effective last year that the Board of Educations could spend for educational purposes, any of the money in the non-lapse fund. Our, our policy, and it has differed from, from the very beginning, states that those monies can only be spent on capital improvement projects.
Okay, so they can change the wording to make it educational and all of their capital improvement work would end up coming over into the capital improvement plan.
So.
And I see I P, the, uh, uh, non-recurring fund.
They decided not to change, then what their intention was, was not to change the language at all. Leave it that that money, those monies could only be used for capital improvement fund. And then there was a motion made on the floor and seconded, and, and there was discussion to go from the one percent to the two percent. And there was a friendly amendment made that was also seconded. And general discussions that, that change in one percent to two percent be sunsetted at the end of the year. And go back to the one percent. And
It is still, you know, it's, it's interesting because it's still the Board of Finance's discretion as to how much money actually gets moved over. You know, they have, they have, you know, great control over that fund. And that was, you know, the point was to make sure, again, as I think I said during either one of our meetings or one of theirs, that previously we had a superintendent who was not acting in an above board fashion and was giving us bad information to work from. And literally at the point in time where we had first established that fund, he was also looking to bring suit against town. So I mean, even that time, we, on the Board of Finance, what we did was we took the nine thousand dollars that we had to pay the attorney for the, on the town side. And we, when we rolled the money over into there, we took out nine thousand dollars. So, you know, that's just an example of what kind of control the Board of Finance has over that fund. So
When you, when you
Even if they had it at two percent, they could not move two percent. They could give whatever reason they wanted to give.
When you view the tapes, you'll see that I attempted to state exactly what you're saying. And because I, I, to me, no matter whether it's one percent or two percent or whatever the maximum, which right now is sent with a three percent ceiling. They have control of the money. And, and, and even if they went along with the two percent.
Yep.
The Board of Finance, before they can spend any of that portion of the two percent, has to approve that expenditure.
And the thing is, I wrote, I wrote what the policy was and did it in a way that would make sure that if we had a superintendent like we had, that the Board of Finance could maintain control over that. And it could never get up to, they could never get a balance that was way too big in there, so to speak. In fact, I think the limit on the balance is three percent.
That's correct. That's, that's, that's the maximum.
It's, it's unfortunate that they haven't really absorbed, you know, how that works. I'm disappointed because I know I've explained it to them.
Well, I was disappointed and, and very disappointed by it because we did a lot of work and, and I thought that everybody understood the intent of what was going on and it made, it still makes a lot of sense to me. I still have my, 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 my feeling is, is that the majority of the Board of Finance agrees with that, to do the two, one percent to two percent and, and the theory behind it. The frustrating part is they did support the friendly amendment, which then it was, was subsequent to that, the motion was made to postpone any action which they've done.
I feel sorry, I feel sorry for the Board of, of Education, because they're trying to, you know, do some things that
Well, maybe it's self-hitting, but I still, I feel sorry for us because we, we've had a, a, a capital improvement committee that's been meeting, that's been trying to put together our worksheets. And it was based on, because what the Board of Education was doing through the superintendent was saying that if the Board of Finance changed the policy to two percent. And if they made an adjustment and, and allowed a hundred, at least a hundred and thirty-five thousand to go over to the that two percent fund, not lapsing fund.
There would now be educational purposes rather than capital.
No, it would, it would remain to be capital. And they went along with that. And, and, and the superintendent was happy to say, I fully want to be transparent. If we're going to spend any portion of that lapsing fund, I will come to the, the, the Board of Finance with a complete explanation of the project and, and the dollar amount. But he, they took it a step forward. And what they said was out of the, the, the new, say it goes to two percent app, out of the new balance, which supposedly would be more than half, they would pay out of that lapsing fund, one half of the cost of the replacement of the fuel co, uh, tank up there. Which totals two hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And you know, Catherine, and Roger, you, you haven't been on the front line. I think you, you're, you're aware of what's been going on with Catherine. I, there are hard feelings about prior administrations up there basically not being transparent or completely forthright with the Board of Finance or the Board of Selectmen. And and, and there's obviously a bad taste left in a number of people's mouths about that. But my, my thought was let's draw a line in the sand. We've got a new relationship. I think we're going to have a new working understanding. And let, let's not hold them to sins past.
We have, we have a new superintendent and a new financial manager at that school, and both of them are superstars. I know Craig is very much, he's a finance guy. He's, I know he's on top of everything. It's, it's really unfortunate that they would treat, treat them be so narrow minded as to not really look at how, what they are trying to do there. And the, as far as I can tell, and certainly, you know, while I was sitting in your seat, Bill, and even now, the information we get from Craig is, is, is great. I mean, literally, he doesn't, he doesn't mince any words. He doesn't try to play games. He's just trying to do the best he can for the town and the school.
I, I wholeheartedly agree. I've probably had ten meetings with Craig and, and, and
Yeah.
My, my, my intention and, and, and what I'm hoping to accomplish is that we have a much open relationship with the Board of Ed. I mean, I think it's imperative for the proper operation of this community. But again, now I, I don't want to read more into this or get everybody more upset. The motion that the Board of Finance made, and then it, the subsequent two or three other motions that were on their agenda were the same thing about how much money or whatever was just a motion. It didn't deny it. It was a motion to postpone. So it may be that cooler heads will prevail. I, I seen, it seemed to me to be very foolish to make a motion to go to two percent and then at the end of next fiscal year, go back to one percent. I just, maybe there's a logic in there. I didn't hear it.
They could decide next year if they want to change the policy.
They can change it anytime they want.
Yeah, exactly. And that policy is part of what gets put out with our budget package. You know, it's, it's in the, it's in our policies.
The, the other thing with out of the, the, the two hundred and seventy thousand, it's projected to be the cost of the fuel tank. Craig has already started the ball rolling. And I couldn't agree with Catherine's comments more about his competency and his effort to be transparent. And I mean, that's, that's all I've experienced in my dealings with him and Dina up there, the finance director. But we're going to be getting seventy to seventy-three percent back in grant funds of those funds. And if the Board of Finance so chose, anytime they want, I wouldn't do it until we had the money at hand. They can designate those reimbursement grants that will automatically go into the general fund anyway. It doesn't go into the Board of Education fund. They can designate those funds, those reimbursable seventy or seventy-three percent into C N R, the Board of Finance.
Absolutely. And, and for whatever reason, they don't seem to understand the resources that are available to them, you know, and how to, how to deploy those resources. The other thing too is, everybody needs to remember, we taxed, the, the Board of Ed's budget was passed as its own separate budget. And the taxpayers of this town through the budget process, the referendum, approved giving the school that money. And so for, for them to not give the school that money, as much of it as they can that was left over, is, and then take it back for the town, is just, to me, it's not ethical.
Well, I won't question their, their ethical or not, but I think there's a basic misunderstanding and, and unfortunately a mistrust there. And I'm hoping we can overcome that because it doesn't make any sense to me. And Catherine, as you just said, and we don't, I guess we don't have to mention anymore. The Board of Finance has within their realm of authority to change that policy or adjust that policy anytime they want.
Right. There are a lot of towns that don't have this fund.
Well, I think it's very foolish. And, and, and just to go back, the reason, and, and I thought to give due credit to the state, it was probably one of the more wisdom type things that they've done. What was happening historically was that these boards had to give all the money back at the end of the fiscal year to the towns or the mishalos. I ran into this with state spending too. At the end of a fiscal year, I'll never forget, I won't mention it, I, I, I never forget, I, with a particular agency, I, I was doing a site inspection. And I walked into a room that was probably close to a thousand square feet. And it was full of car seats. And I said, and it happened to be, I think, the, the first week in July. And I said, what in the world is this all about? And they said, well, it was a loser or, or spend it or lose it scenario. So we spent the money on car seats. Now, they didn't use those car seats for five years, but, but it's, it's typical to what we were forcing our own departments into doing. You came to the end of fiscal year, let's spend the money, let's go out and buy four hundred cases of paper, whether we need it or not, because we don't. So I think in, in good judgment, they allowed this non-lapsing fund to go over to the school. They could identify what the purpose was. I just think it made sense for everybody. And I, I don't think everybody gets the gist of what brought that about.
Right.
And, and, and I agree that there, there was Board Education funds. They, they justified their budgets. They were approved on a separate issue on, 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 on an annual budget vote.
Yep.
They didn't spend it. If they can justify holding on to that, and then before they can spend it again, they got to get approval from the Board of Finance anyway.
They're just to spend as they see fit.
Exactly, exactly.
The simplest solution to this for them, well, one is, well, I would say go to two percent. But in your, in the policy to say that the money can be used for education purposes or for the, what's already there written up there. And that in order to use the money, they come to the Board of Finance, which they have to do anyway.
Yeah.
All I have to do is add in for educational purposes.
Well, and that, and that, that then will coincide with the concise language that's in the state statute. Town doesn't have to do that, but
Exactly. But it'll, it'll at least fit with what the state says. But so I will be at that next.
Even if they don't do that, if they just do the one percent to two percent, at least that's a big start in that, that covers us. Cause at this point on the worksheet that we've got with the capital committee that we were working on, we were anticipating that that two percent would transpire, that, that, that the Board of Ed would contribute up to one thirty-five if they had the one thirty-five in the non-lapsing to that project. And then it wouldn't come out of C N R. Now, now it looks like the whole two seventy, if they don't do anything. And I, I'm not saying they're going to do that, because there's a difference between rejecting And I, and I'm not saying they're gonna do that, because there's a difference between rejecting it and postponing it. So I'm, I'm hoping that. Everybody can, can give it more thought to it and at their next meeting, they, they go ahead with the two percent.
Maybe what I can, well, first of all, I'll be at that next meeting. I'll make sure to be there, but I think that, um. It would be a good idea if Chuck Funk was there as well. Uh, because I know he understood this. I also know that he, uh, had been working on the relationship with the superintendent as well. So, uh. So to maybe show, uh, some of that leadership so that they understand, you know, maybe he can put it in terms that they can follow.
Yeah, I, I, the, the, the leadership of the Board of Finance, and I don't want to start pointing fingers at anybody here, but. I, I think the leadership, the officers of, of the Board of Finance do understand it and did support the two percent. In fact, one of them was a maker of the original motion. But I think there's a couple of members there. That. Don't get it at this point.
It's, it's, it's a bit how, speaking from experience, it's a big learning curve.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I, I'm, I'm hoping that, that. You know, cooler heads prevail and, and, and these are intelligent people that they get a bit educated or, or. Or look into this a little more because I, we, we, we're not looking for fried ice here. I mean, it's pretty simple and cut. Forthright on what we were looking for.
Right, they need to be educated. The thing is, is will they accept the education? So. Uh, and they need, they need to get over the, um. Bad feelings about the Board of Education. This, this is not how we should be.
Well, I mean, we all.
Handling things in our town.
We all have that education. I, I, I remember when, when, uh. One of our predecessors, in fact, I think two of them, Catherine, to fir- the first selectman positions. Went down to the school because they got a heads up about summer. They were there on a different thing. And found out there was a complete construction project going on.
Oh, I know. I know about that.
With, with the wiring and the ceiling claim, they, they hadn't even pulled a permit.
No, I know.
And, and, and that was. That was what led to a lot of these hard feelings that we have and, and.
Well, I was, I wasn't happy that they gave him a permit after that.
I, I, I'm convinced that there's a new attitude and it's a new beginning up there at the school. And I know I'm gonna do my damnedest. I think everybody on our board feels the same way. To, to make sure that we don't have an adversarial rela- relationship. Understanding the school has a role to support their budget to get theirs. We have, we have a, a role. Responsibility to the entire town. So there's naturally gonna be a debate there and we're gonna look at things in a bit of a different light. But there's no reason why there has to be hard feelings. Or again, looking at sins past and letting that cloud our judgment.
Don't even have the same participants on the board from sins past.
Right.
So, um, yeah, that's, that's just.
Yeah. So. Anyway. Get back to our, our budget. Um.
Yeah.
That's what I intend on doing Thursday. Now, a couple of things that I, that. And first of all, I want to apologize and, and I know Cheryl apologized probably to both of you already. About, I didn't get our budget book until three thirty this past Wednesday. Although I'd been talking with agencies and I had a good idea of the monies that were coming in. We are having problems with this new. Software system that we installed. Cheryl is, is on the phone more than she's not with Tyler, trying to get clarification and some assistance. I'm gonna get into that pretty heavily, whether, even if I've gotta get somebody from Tyler to come down here. When we were sold this system, Catherine, and you were involved in it when we did it.
No.
No.
I wasn't.
Okay.
Believe it or not.
Maybe you should have been.
I asked to be, but they, uh, did not include me. So.
I know one of Cheryl's concerns, I can remember this from when we were first considering it, that she was left out of the loop too.
Right, and that created bad feelings and also affects how you embrace a system.
So. Because of those concerns in, in our experience right now. We're not getting our typical printouts. We're not getting them on a timely basis, because frankly. Our finance department is having issues with the software.
So, Bill, what I had suggested, and actually it was Craig Kreller at the school, the superintendent who suggested it. He has worked with the system. Um, he has worked in other places with the system. Uh, his finance manager has as well. And what he offered was he had an expert in the system that he said he could bring in. And we could split the costs or whatever, or he could give us a person's name and we could have that person work with Cheryl. Now, I did bring that up to Cheryl. I don't think, um, she was really thinking that hard about it at the time, but that's what. You know, that's having a person come in and work with her who is an expert.
Well, just to update that a little bit, Catherine. They have actually hired that person that you're talking about.
Awesome.
And, and I've had discussions with Craig. And he's offered and, and made us suggesting that perhaps, and this person is from another. Much larger school system than we have.
Yeah.
Has expertise with the Tyler system. And he has offered for us to consider. Hiring that person at least one day a week.
That's what we, he and I discussed.
And, and, and. You know, we would out, we, and this is gonna lead to the next thing I was gonna talk about that's not in our budget. Um, this person could assist our folks with familiarizing themselves with the system. As well as being a help and, and assigned particularly charge to this person. And I don't know what those charges and, and. You know, Cheryl's in, in charge of that department. We, we have to clarify wh- what we need and what we could assign.
Be developing reports. It could be, uh, there's a number of things that person could.
Makes perfect sense to me, but. So anyway, those are things we're working on. They're not there yet, but. The point of this whole conversation I started was, and I apologize. We do not have the forms in the forms that we normally look at. At this time in a budget process. We're catching up. I know Cheryl is doing her best. And, um, we'll just have to work together and get through this. Now, having said all, go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, so when we, when we think about this person, one of the things, um, and that'll probably be part of our conversation as well. Is, um, you know, the finance department has asked for help. They, you know, Cheryl approached the Board of Selectmen.
That was gonna be the second part of my comment.
Okay, good. We're on the same wavelength. That's terrific.
On the same wavelength. What is not in our budget anywhere is what we had talked about last year. And what I had an objection to, not necessarily consideration of the position. But we were looking to bring it in, in mid-budget.
Understood.
And, you know, I, I think if you're gonna elaborate on that, Roger, and, and make a decision, you, you should do it. During the time we're in right now.
Yep.
And my also thought was. That I know when we were originally talking about this, Catherine, we were talking about a full-time position. For Cheryl. In that department and.
Yep.
What, what? What I was saying that I thought would be more appropriate. Or be best, to the best interest of the town. Was have some sort of a floating position. We could primarily have them working in the. Finance department, but they'd work under the Board of Selectmen's office. And if we had an illness in one of our other offices. Or we needed to somebody to fill in or whatever, we could utilize that person as a utility person. Because we did have a floating position back several years ago.
That was many years ago.
And time goes by too quick, Catherine, I know, but. Um, and it, it was working out, but un- unfortunately, and it's the nature of the beast, the, the, the person who we had hired. Got familiarized, got educated in the assessment process and the. And, and the tax collectors' process and, and, and. God bless her. Got a better job from a town that is in a lot more, uh, financial stability or abilities than the town of Ashville.
Now, just to back up, I mean, you were talking about floating. Isn't this person also helping the Board of Ed too?
Well, the, that, we're talking about two different things. The, the, the position that, that Craig just filled.
Yep.
Right now just works for the Board of Ed.
Okay.
And I, I haven't talked to, to Craig about this in a couple of weeks, but I believe it's a five day. For his budget purposes and, 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 and he thinks that. He could give her to us for one day a week. And then we'd have to work out whether we reimburse the school or the mechanics of that, that we would use that person. That would not be a floating position. That would be designated strictly to the finance office. But. Cheryl's gotta be comfortable with that too.
I was gonna say that. Um, the finance office, what we're hearing and we've been hearing for a number of years now, is complaints about the system. Okay, the system is taking too much of the time. So when we talk about whether or not there's a floating person, which I still don't agree with, because I think that. Um, things are much more specialized now and you need to have people, you, you can't have someone. Fill in for the assessor unless that person has been fully trained. Okay, you can't have them fill in for the town clerk unless they've been fully trained and I don't know what kind of certifications they need to have. Um, but when it comes to what. The finance department has been complaining about and saying they don't have enough time because of is the system. So having a person come in to work one day a week. With them, um, whatever the issues are with the system or to take over some of those responsibilities. Um, maybe, I don't know if it's the more mundane work or whatever, but to help them find ways to streamline their efforts when they're working with the system. Is going to hopefully free up quite a bit of time in the fin- in the finance department.
Catherine, you and I will probably be debating this forever, but, but I. I, I, I agree with most of what you said. I, I'm also conscious of the fact. That at one time we had two people in the assessor's office. We had two people in the.
Yeah.
Tax collector's office.
Yep.
And, and I mean, no disrespect to anybody, but we, we're now down to one person in both of those offices.
Yep.
And, and our, our, our employee population, we're all aging. And, 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 and susceptible to God from the, thank God, we have not been hit with COVID badly in this. And I think that's because of a lot of precautions that all of us have, have been happy to have in place, but. And, 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 and I granted this floating position would not be able to per se do. The assessor's main work or the tax collectors' main work. But at least we could have somebody that's familiarized enough. That God forbid, one or both of those people get sick or they have a problem. Would able at least to sit in those offices temporarily. And keep the off- offices functioning if no more than answering the phones.
I'm, I'm good with that, Bill. Bill, I'm good with that. I understand that.
Okay.
Because we actually had someone in the hospital for a couple of weeks and, and as a result, we weren't able to do some things.
Yeah.
So.
So anyway, those are things we can discuss. We, we're certainly not gonna resolve that today, but I. You know, I.
We have to plan for it in the budget though.
I, I, I think that the fact that, that, that the Tyler system is not performing up to what. Our expectations were. We spent a lot of money on that system. You remember how much it was, Catherine? It was in excess.
No, like I said.
Excess of a hundred thousand.
Yeah, but. Complicated and cumbersome, but it's a good system.
This way, let's put it this way. So last year, when I was trying to get reports out for this budget process. One of the, the problems that we had and the reason that Cheryl had to go into the old system to pull the information out. Uh, so because she knew how to do the reporting for that, was that. When you look at what we've gotten here that shows, you know, budget requests, the whole, uh, this spreadsheet that says, uh. You know, has all the pages with all the, uh, I'm gonna hold it up.
Yep.
With all the accounts on it. Um, the only, what they couldn't, what Cheryl didn't know how to do is get the description on the report. She had the account numbers, but no descriptions. And, you know, coming from the land of I T where I come from, that's a pretty simple fix. And that's because she didn't know how to do, make reports. And whatever, I don't know if it was a canned report or whatever that they had, but just to get the description on the report. So there was already a report format there. It was just adding an element to it. And so. The, that was, she spent, I think, quite a bit of time trying to figure out how to do that, where if we had, like you said, someone come in. That person could actually add the thing to the report and show her how to do it. You know, um, so I don't know, did this report that we got. Did it come from the system or did she take it from the old system?
I believe Catherine, and, and, and I put in parentheses, believe it's from the new system. I'm not totally sure of that, but I, I believe so, because it seemed to me that it wasn't long ago that I asked. If we could generate from the old system and I, I believe I was told, we no longer have that capability.
Okay, that makes sense. All right, so going into the.
So anyway, what's not in our budget. And, and, and what I'm gonna propose to doing, I, I don't know if you folks would be available. Unfortunately, I've been getting in a habit here of having meetings on Wednesday nights at six o'clock, but. I didn't know if you wanted to, to, to try to get together this coming Wednesday. Or perhaps after the Board of Finance meeting next Thursday, the following Wednesday. And try to hash out. And, and, and to come up with a plan. Whether we're gonna consider making a recommendation to hire this one person from the school. Whether we wanna go ahead and, 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 which I think would be much more economical, but I wanna make sure it also is beneficial to us. Or if we wanna consider. A new full-time position here, or even a twenty-five or twenty-eight hour position. I think you're gonna have to go with a full position if you go that way. But for us to hash out and also figure out what the bottom line cost of that position, because of course it's not just salary.
I can be available anytime.
Well, why don't we, why? What, what, what are your thoughts on either getting together this Wednesday night? Or waiting till the following Wednesday night after the Board of Finance? And we should have more direction on what they're doing with the one percent, the two percent. Hopefully we'll have bottom lines from the Board of Ed and, and Neo Smith. And then I think we can get into the nitty gritty. I mean, are we, you know, on, on cuts within our own budget? Because as you both know, and, and it's one of the reasons why. I intentionally didn't get prepared to make a presentation of our recommendation for cuts in our budget. For as long as I can remember, town government side of this budget works right at the line. Our, our, I, I can't commend our departments more. Than, than holding the line on expenses year after year after year. And we go in there and, excuse me for lack of a better term, we nickel and dime them. And we make minimal cuts. And I think it's just time we give them their due. When I spoke to the department heads and that, I said, put in. You understand we're under constrictions on what we can afford and what we can't. Put in a budget that you need. I don't want something that's pie in the sky that you'd like, but what you need, and I, I honestly think. Every department, I, I think there's only one that I could think of and I'm not gonna mention them right now that. I think is a little overboard on their, their labor end of it. But I think these are honest budgets put together by our folks.
Again, having sat in your seat. Um, uh, and having, uh, you know, looked at all those budgets over many, many years. Um, I couldn't agree more in terms of how these departments. Put their budgets together. And how they cinch their belts where they can. And how they're trying to move forward in a responsible fashion, you know, um. They, I, I could not be more impressed, so.
Well, we gotta be careful carefully, because these are two things now today we totally agree on. I'm kidding.
Are we gonna do the, I mean. Do we wanna sit there and attend the Board of Finance meeting? Uh.
Yes.
As a group?
I, I love that. I was, I was gonna suggest.
Why don't we do that and then we'll have our, our meeting with the data the following Wednesday?
Sounds good to me.
Um, so again, what, what the plan is, if I understand correctly, is not to present. The Board of Selectmen's, uh.
Recommendations.
Recommendations. Um, you'll need to let them know in advance because that's on the calendar, their budget calendar.
I have told both the chairman and the clerk that that's my intention at this point.
Okay, and the thing is, I know you mentioned that, um. It's your presentation. Actually, it's a presentation of the Board of Selectmen. So all of us should be, uh, we should all be present for that anyway. And, uh, be able to speak to whatever's on there, uh, because we all need to understand it as well. So, uh.
I, 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 I agree with the term Board of Selectmen, but I think historically. The, the first selectman leads and, and I, you and I.
Of course, of course. That's not a problem at all, but it's. Yeah, leads to discussion, but it is something that says. yeah, leads to discussion, but it is something that says Board of Selectmen.
And hopefully that reflects the thinking that we've reached a consensus on everything, but I I certainly encourage you to and 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 not only to attend, but also to participate. I think we work best working as a team.
Yes, absolutely. Um, and also I'm going to give a contact Chuck Funk. There may be an opportunity for him to be there to answer any questions or concerns they might have. There are a number of members on that board who um worked with Chuck in the past. So uh, when it especially when it comes to that uh unexpended education, unexpended fund. All right, so are there any things we wanna talk about that are um in this budget at this point in time?
Well, they're they're going back to your worksheet that the um capital committee put together and that we were working on. Again, it's it's a bit up in the air because we, the 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 committee and myself were anticipating that we would be able to look to the Board of Education. And what we wanted to do, all of our figuring and calculations were based and and we had a total agreement and 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 I encouraged it and I know you folks are encouraged it that under no circumstances did we wanna bring our unassigned fund anywhere. We didn't wanna bring it below ten percent minimal.
Actually, I thought it was twelve percent. According to what the auditors have have
Apparently, there 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 that's a matter of some interpretation, but but we were using ten percent as a guideline. I I said I would prefer be even more comfortable to go with ten and a half at a minimum. But what we didn't wanna do is bring it below that because as you folks know, we've got a couple of major bonding packages coming up in the near future. We've got a roof project. We've got a solar project coming up at the school. Um, and we're looking to bundle uh in a bond package, so we cannot afford to do anything that would reflect or potentially hurt our credit rating in a big perspective. Credit rates are where we need them to be right now and and I certainly don't wanna be penalized in any way, so that's one of the things. In 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 the second column. And I is yours in color?
Could I, could I just speak to what you just said, Bill? I am, I conveyed that to the Board of Finance. I conveyed it to them in either their first meeting or their second meeting or their third meeting. That um it would be, uh, I actually I think it was their first meeting, that it would be unwise to dip into the unassigned fund. Okay, that's a slippery slope. Again, it's like borrowing, it's like taking money out of your savings account account to pay your monthly electric bill. You know, that's just doesn't make sense.
Not to put words in their mouth, but I I I got no impression from any of them that they intend on on even consideration of going, reducing that anything less than what we talked about because of that point. Do you, do you have the color version of the the worksheet?
I just printed.
Oh, okay, good, good. You have a black and white there, but Roger, second column. There's a couple of things there uh on mine and mine was dated yesterday at uh
No, wait a minute, looking at the wrong one.
We're looking, I'm I'm looking at the one that's uh February eleventh at three fifty-three P M.
That's why finally, you know, I asked Chris, I said, would you put the date and the time at the top because we we I end up with twelve of these versions on my desk and I don't know which 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 one to look at. Anyway, I'm looking at the one dated yesterday at five uh three fifty-three. And what that differs from the one that we did before then in working again with the school and 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 talking with our highway forum. We realized that we're at a compromised situation because we have no gasoline fuel tank up at the highway garage. Two storms back ago, Joe was out on on uh we had a pretty severe ice storm and he was out with the truck that needed gas, not diesel, but gas. And Cumberland was closed, Exter Mart was closed and and the truck stop was the only place he could go to get gas. We've got all of the vans that are up at the school that run on gas, not the buses, but the vans. So what Joe is proposing and Craig is fully supportive of it is that we install a gas tank, two thousand capacity up at the school, similar to what we've done with the diesel, except I believe that the the school paid for the diesel tank.
Do I see that on this list?
It it was, it was on the list on that previous version. What I did was I moved it over to ARPA funds. Because I think I think in the new definitions, under the golden rule with ARPA, it's a financial just giving you some background on on, it's one thing and we can go over them all if you want. But we we think it's important. Could it be put off for a year? It could. Craig is Craig is is crunching some numbers for us and I agree with Catherine because he is good at that. It's worth his part of his expertise over the years is done and I I think it's a good resource for us. But between the convenience, particularly in an emergency that we'd have to have that available to us. Because for instance, this new truck that we're just taking delivery on, that's gasoline, it's not diesel. So from an emergency basis, it 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 makes sense. From the vans up at the school, it makes sense and Craig has crunched the numbers exclusive of us saving any money because you don't pay any federal or local tax on the gas. Close to a dollar a gallon just there. This Craig has said, and don't quote me because I don't have it in front, but between three and thirty-three hundred dollars a year from his fuel consumption alone will save, go towards paying for itself, so.
And how much does it cost? How much is it gonna cost to put it in?
Twenty-one thousand. Twenty-one to twenty-five we're getting and we're fine tuning the the numbers on it.
I think it's a great idea. Just a quick question, um, the fire department, uh, where do they get their gas from?
We get them right from the from the diesel fuel tank up at the public works.
There there are meters for all of the trucks on on the diesel and they register who's taking what for what.
Yeah, and all our vehicles are diesel.
All of them, the ambulance is some Okay, thank you.
The exception to that, Catherine, is that their chainsaws, their 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 other equipment, those are all gasoline.
The rescue boat.
The things you'd need in a dire emergency are gasoline. I mean, besides, of course, I need the apparatus.
We have now, you know, we've had over the last, I'd say, over the last year, we've had some pretty significant storms, whether it was water or snow. And uh, you know, we're difficult getting things uh moving around and gas stations were not open. So I think this is a great idea.
So anyway, that that that's one thing I I kinda jumped off because I got confused with the the prior list, but the only things that I would think and and we can do this a week from this coming Wednesday. I've talked to Joe, we've got a roller in an expenditure here out of the C N R. We've also got a dump truck, dump truck, I'm convinced we have to go full. The the roller, which is a forty thousand dollar item. While he'd like to have that, while it makes more sense on an efficiency basis and on a a time basis because we don't depend on renting a a unit and when its availability is. That's one thing that if we needed to cut or push off to a future year, we could do, I just
Could we use ARPA if we're trying to flatten the curve?
Definition you could, but
With with the new definitions and and a general term and and I'm happy to give it a shot, but that's why you'll you you remember when we bought this new truck. We 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 put in that motion that was passed by town meeting. ARPA funds were gonna be applied unless they were deemed, I mean, the 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 federal government's being real cute with this because they don't have a a free approval process we can go through. They're leaving all of us municipalities kinda hanging out there on a limb with the potential that some auditor five years from now says, oh, you shouldn't have had that in the ARPA fund, but I talking consensus that I've got from counterparts, first selectman and mayors, a couple of town managers, that's not gonna happen. And I think under the new gen- uh definitions of the the golden rules general governmental services and and the thing that is helping us the most and you've got a copy of it is the latest audit report that we got that shows that our revenue deficit is one million thirty thousand dollars. I'm being told from a number of sources, including Catherine, I don't know if you were in on it or not, but C C M had a webinar on on the golden rule and the new interpretations that there's a lot of liberty given with with the definition under governmental services. And that's why you'll see I've bolstered up what what I'm gonna propose to you guys and we're gonna bring it eventually to a town meeting to put into those ARPA funds.
This is, this is uh, this whole ARPA thing has been quite the windfall for for everybody. And yeah, and other thing with the auditing and and all of that, you have to remember something. You've gotta remember that every municipality in the United States has been given monies, okay, and are going by this. And if you think they're going to be looking at a little burg like Ashford for the amount of money that we got compared to what the big guys got. I don't think that's ever gonna happen. Now, the thing is, we wanna do the right thing. We wanna make sure that we're doing the right thing. And in reality, with the new with the finalized calculation, if you will, on the loss of revenue, the bottom line is the entire one point two million dollars could have been used for whatever governmental services. So, uh, so they were very generous and it's a very good thing.
I I I've had exactly your words echoed to me from a number of other town leaders and and some towns much larger than ours. Uh, of course, they've also, as you said, they've got a lot more money. I think Wyndham alone got a hundred million dollars. And they went out and bought a new fire truck. They bought, I I spoke with Jim but it was either two or four police cruisers. They bought a new ambulance, fully outfitted.
Government services.
So anyway.
Okay, good.
Salt shed replacement, I mean, I keep, you know, three hundred and fifty thousand for salt shed.
So much higher estimate than Joe gave me when we talked about it.
Well, one of the, one of the things that I sat down with Joe before we had our 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 uh capital improvements committee meeting and I said, Joe, I I want you to put down everything that you think you need both today and in the future. Because what Joe has said to me and he said, well, you know, when we had our initial talk, he says, well, you know, I don't put everything down because it's been shut down and I'm the first one that gets cut. And I said, so I said, look, that's it's no excuse. I said, in order for my board to properly operate in the best interest of the town, we not only have to look at today's picture, we look have to look at down the road. So the the salt shed is something that's been talked about for several years. I think we've gotta get it on our radar. Does it have to be done this year? No, but the cost of these things, to to your point, Catherine, is is drastically in increasing as we go along. Um, most of the equipment, like the the roller that I'm talking about, potentially we could consider cutting. We've already been told that if we wait till next year to do that, the cost is already marked up by the manufacturer to go up twenty-two percent. So when you're looking at forty thousand dollars, twenty-two percent, if you're looking at a a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck and incidentally, this dump truck, if we were to take it out and not do it this year, it from the day we ordered after the budget is processed approved, it's gonna be a year delivery. If we wait on that to the following year, they're saying it's probably gonna be three years and the cost could be up or more than forty percent more than we're paying now. So I think those are when in our deliberations, I think those are all things that we gotta consider. Uh, and and you know, as as Catherine touched on, the 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 ARPA fund is is a godsend at this point with us.
Man of from heaven.
Yeah, and I think it gives us an opportunity, which I think is the intent and it's for the benefit of the entire town for long-term planning.
You know, I have a thought here on the um suggested funding on the ARPA funding. If we have the ARPA funding as part of our capital project, our capital improvement plan for the upcoming year and this capital improvement plan is presented to the public, then I don't think you need a town meeting to approve the monies for that.
Well, I we'll we'll be debating
Town meeting to explain. You need a town meeting to explain.
Right, you need a pu- a public hearing on that. I I, for instance, Erica from Wellington and a couple of other towns that I've been talking to. What they've done is they've got a public hearing on their recommended things that the boards are recommending. And then they take a vote as a package at their town meeting, but I think we can debate that. I think there's there's cause whether it's in our capital plan, if it's already been voted on, but I I think that the the mechanism, the mechanics of that, Catherine, is something that we'll discuss and 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 work out. There there's a potential for that. I mean, I also wondered if 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 any of these funds that we're talking about and I'm just thinking out loud here right now regarding the replacement of the fuel tank, is that susceptible to ARPA funding? It may be a stretch, but maybe that's something else we can look at.
I I would think that it would fit.
I mean, right now, and don't hold me to it, but the 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 one point two million and we've got half of it in the coffers already. What we projected and 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 it's also why I wanted the input from the capitals committee, because I think they kinda go along, but all of the commitments with the exception of where we have question marks and those have to be filled in. Right now we're at about between four hundred and four hundred and fifty thousand total one point two million that we have. So we're we're talking about committing about a third of it, so we we've got the opportunity to make some other long-term plans with that money.
Actually, I think we have to have our our plan, our complete plan for the use of the money done by December thirty-first of this year.
You may be right, but I think it's next year, but uh we'll
That could be, that could be.
It's next year. I think I think it was four years to spend it, two years to plan.
To plan, yeah. Okay, so again, when you think about the things that other towns have used the monies for that have also, you know, with the new wording, if you will, whatever, the new um rules. Replacing the uh oil tank at the school would fit.
Unless we, but we're talking about being able to get a seventy-three percent of that back from Grant.
Well, that that that's what we've gotta reset. That's sort of our homework, what we've gotta do. Because what we don't wanna do is jeopardize. I don't wanna commit or spend any more of the ARPA money than we have to or we can and we certainly have, that's like another thing I wanted to bring up to you that I've heard. If and when this new infrastructure acts by by the federal government gets approved. One of, one of the three main categories of that, in fact, Jim Rupert may disappoint to us is broadband. So the suggestion is don't commit your ARPA funds to that yet because the infrastructure act is gonna be a new pool of money that is going to probably pay a hundred percent of that.
The trouble, the trouble with the infrastructure act is it's not going to be, if you will, in place for a number of years. At least two, if not three. So what we have is we have people, you know, who don't have access now.
I just think it's something we have to keep in mind. I mean, i- i- if if we spend that, what is it, sixty thousand or whatever, it's not gonna kill all our funds and and right now we there's margins here that we can work with, but I I just throw that out because I know a couple of other towns are holding on and most towns are much more extravagant than we are with what they need to do with broadband.
Have we looked into, you know, again with salt sheds and what have you, groundwater and what have you. I mean, they're very welcome to be grants for salt sheds too.
That's a possibility. And and why we need it on our and we need a plan and I'd like to get something in 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 the works for this year. We may be okay over there, but if we ended up with an environmental breakdown. You got a real problem. And that that's why it needs. Now, I will also tell you that that up at the school, that oil tank. Their insurance company will no longer cover that tank because we're in the final year. Of the lifetime, that and that's why there was some talk, well, let's push that. Oil tank, I think one of the members of the Board of Education, let's push the oil tank off to next year. And Craig says, no, this is a priority. We we push the roof off, we push the solar off. This is something that has to be done because, God forbid, right now it's solid. They've they've done tests and everything up there. But if that was breached in any way, the environmental cost, we'd love to be paying the two seventy, because it'd be much broader than that. So.
Oh, yes.
You know.
Absolutely. Um, I see on the capital improvement. List, there are some items, there's one here, modernize HVAC system for the school. But there's no figure there for that. It's not in, it's not in the plan, you know, what they have for the plan at this point. What's great about the Capital Improvement Committee is that this is not. If this committee needs to be meeting, you know, fairly regularly as throughout the year.
And I had, I I I was very appreciative of their expertise. And 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 the brain bank that we had with the input that we got from that committee. Uh, and I agree, Catherine, if it, unfortunately, most of those people that that are on that committee, like we, we know. Most of our people that are working in the town are wearing many hats and.
Yeah, there there were, there are other committees too.
Uh, you know. Gonna be a point of a burnout level. I I know they're all dedicated over the many years. But uh, no, I agree, it's it's a very valuable resource.
Okay, and what's the question marks on Ashford historical properties? Is this a?
Well, that's, that's, that's basically the Trumpco House. And I don't know, I did, I I tried to forward it, I unfortunately sent it to my home. Email and I tried to forward to you and Roger, but I got another follow-up.
Oh, I, I saw.
Apology from Bob Heard. I know the last time he told me that he had been sick and they weren't sure what it was, but it sounds like they nailed it down yet, but. The way that looks now, I don't know when we're gonna get that report.
That's, and that's what's, uh, uh, now also, just uh, from my perspective. I'm more concerned about our other buildings. Um, the buildings we're actually using today being uh, uh, safe. From an air quality perspective and being efficient. Because, you know, I know we're spending more on fu- on fuel and things like that for some, at least for Norton.
Well, one of the, one of the things that you'll notice, I believe, under ARPA. We've got, now, what we're talking about doing both in the main hall. Is and putting money, we think it's a legitimate cost under ARPA. Is the split units, I don't know if you would talk about.
That's what the, that's what the uh, the guys who did the inspect, that are uh, working for us from CES.
Yeah.
They uh, they mentioned the split units too. We had already, Chris and I had talked about that.
And they, they, they are in in the budget under ARPA. And we think that'll be a big improvement, both for air quality. For consistency and, I mean, there's a whole bunch of reasons for that.
Yeah.
I have not gone over that report. I did get, I I. I had met with.
Can you send it to us?
He sent it to us. You should have been forwarded a copy of it.
Oh, I didn't see, okay.
I'll double check with Chris on Monday, but.
That's okay, let me double check. Maybe I somehow missed it. Did she, is, was it Chris that sent it out?
I believe so.
Just the Board of Finance, is that for the Tuesday, the twenty-second?
No, it's this coming Thursday, this coming Thursday, the seventeenth, I think it is. Um, but anyway, I'd call him because I I met with the uh, sustainability group this week. And we we were talking about things in particular and. Uh, one of the things in that discussion, and and I looked up, there's nothing in that that report. That took a look at our um, solar panels. And and what.
Oh, no, because we had, we had somebody come out and look at the solar panels.
Yeah, they came out, looked at this one, found out a third of them were shut off. We got them on. Which is good reason maybe they weren't being efficient. But.
Very good.
Anyway, um. He said to me that he he thought there was something in the report. I haven't read it, page to page, it's a lengthy report. But he said he didn't think they took a look, although he thought they did mention it. In in each of the categories, but he he said because it it didn't relate to COVID in any way.
Right.
So he was trying. Not in the report.
Yeah, because the intent was to use ARPA money for this.
Yeah, yeah.
And I didn't have the calculation yet on the other, the, um. I'm trying to think, because we had the, we had the roof, we had the roof inspected at the same time as these guys were there. They were actually all, everybody was there the same day.
It was funny because, you know, they come around annually, the 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 folks that own the solar systems here at Town Office Building.
Oh, really?
And I had him look up. And. He was doing, him and his partner were the ones that were here the last time that they, and he says, we're sure we left them on. So then, they're not sure, it was just actually a manual switch up there that was shut off.
You know how it got shut, I mean, was on the roof that was shut off?
You know, they go up into the 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 attic way here.
Oh, okay.
I guess the control boxes are up there.
Yeah.
So kind of a mystery, but they're back on, they're, what he did, I had him when he, when he found that out. I said, well, maybe it was off for a reason. I don't know who looked at it or whatever. So he put them on and he stayed around quite a while and make sure there was. It wasn't shut off because there was a malfunction or something.
Yeah, it wasn't, uh, it wasn't shut off on my watch, so it must have been off for quite a while. Um, the Energy Task Force. Has information too about, they they track our uh. Energy use as well. I don't know if they also do the solar.
Um, I think they do. I think they do.
Yeah. Uh, I'll, I'll talk with them about what information they have and make sure that gets passed on to us.
Can I, can I say something?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm on the, I'm on the Energy Task Force and um, I worked on the benchmarking, we um. We have benchmarked from twenty twelve, the energy use. Um, and it was just recently updated. So it's, it shows energy use before and after solar. I don't think it tracks. Doesn't track how much energy you're getting from solar, it just tracks how much um. Electricity you're using from. Ever source and then how much oil and propane you're buying every year.
Is that by building or is that just in total?
It's by building. So, um, I, yeah, I'm, I will, um, I will, uh, I have to. Figure out how to do the reports again, because I haven't done it in a while, but I'll get the reports to you and it'll show how much you use.
I think a year, I think a year or so after the original installation, Mike had got a couple of reports. Uh, and it was done on an individual building basis, like Xander.
Yeah.
We were kind of disappointed because it was not show reflecting what they said that we could look forward to. Um, you know, for savings. Do that, Janet, that'd be terrific.
I'll do that, yeah. Some, some of the problem with the savings is that. You, you know, you still end up paying the delivery charge. And ever sources figured out that they can keep increasing the delivery charges. So even though you're, you have less usage, you're still getting increases in your delivery charges. Uh, unless you're, unless your solar covers hundred percent of your usage.
Yeah.
Um, so that's. Yeah, and we we had um, energy audits done uh, in in the buildings as well and. They did recommend um, mini splits at Norton. But they were too expensive and we couldn't find funding for them. We, you know, we talked to Mike about that.
Well, we think we found it now.
But that would be great. I think another uh, another asset to the. Mini splits in Norton is it's going to um, give better air quality in the library to maintain the books.
Yep.
Abs- absolutely.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Janet. Well, without, does, does anybody wanna go over any, do you have anything else, Catherine?
Um, well, again, on the school with the HVAC, uh, modernizing the HVAC system, have they gotten any kind of an estimate at all?
No.
Rough cut. I'm just looking at the ones that don't have any numbers associated with them to kind of.
I I know they, they've kind of kicked the window replacement and. I guess it's the abatement of of of. Of the asbestos as a result, but they do disturb the windows, it scares me the most, but. They've, they've, they've kicked those things down to next year consideration.
Right, I just don't, yeah, I don't see anything, uh, on the other thing, they also have van replacement, there's nothing there for the future.
Next year, they're anticipating a van, from my understanding.
And they're, what are they, like forty-five thousand, something like that?
I think it's up like everything else. I think it's up from that, Catherine, I'm trying to see where.
So when we, um, when this gets put into the.
I don't see it on the list.
No, no, they got on the list with no nu- number. Um. So what we wanna do, I think, is make sure we've got some kind of a rough cut number. For everything we've got on this list, and we can show it out in the year, you know, years where we think it would happen. Because of the, when I first, when I first ran for office, that way back when for Board of Finance. This was the thing I wanted, was a real. Five-year plan that gave them not just really focused on the current year, but also to see what was coming. And so if we can at least fill in these slots. Uh, let's see, we've got a roof, that's good, uh, oil tank replacement, we got that. Okay, so modernizing the HVAC system, the van replacement. What else do we have? Leave historic, leave historical properties because we have no idea. And. Yeah, so that's all that's missing, two of them. And we're saying the build for the the roof is going to happen in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
That's what we're anticipating.
Yeah. Also down where the fuel tank, the uh, down under suggested funding where it says for the fuel tank, you probably wanna take off the sense. There, so it matches the rest of the numbers, whole numbers. Now. And uh, on the. Truck that we're purchasing now, the F.
Five fifty.
Five fifty.
Um, sorry, because my grandson has something up to him. I'm always trying to remember the number he's got, um. The original plan was to use the. Fire engine, uh, the fire truck that we're replacing. Uh, chassis, whatever it is, and I, um. They uh, turn thing, that's amazing, they can make a. Jet engine out of a sewing machine down at the shop. But um, so we did not use. That money that we were supposed to use in the current fiscal year.
That's correct, seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand, so. My hope is that. We replen. The the truck that we're purchasing, have we figured out if we're purchasing it with ARPA funds?
We did, we we were trying it with ARPA funds. And that was in the motion that was approved by town meeting, it was either ARPA or if that didn't, then it would.
Come out of. It was like or, yeah, that's why I was wondering if we had finalized that. So the seventy thousand. Is going to. Basically stay in the coffer.
For the freightliner.
Right, but they they don't, they're not still considering, if I understand correctly, it was either or. They're not still considering using that seventy thousand.
That's correct, oh, there was, seventy thousand in this year's budget, Roger. To refurbish the old fire truck to be utilized as a.
You know what, Bill, you know what, Bill, it wasn't in this year's budget, it was in next year's.
Next year's budget, seventy.
Yeah, and so we don't see it anymore on here.
Right.
Good point.
Just, just FYI and 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 ended up not materializing, but. When the tornadoes hit down in Kentucky. I was in communication directly after that, a couple of weeks after that, because you couldn't get through the phone lines. With the mayor's office in Mayfield and also the fire chief's office there. And I let them know, I said, we have a fire truck that's fully outfitted right now. That's ready to be decommissioned by a department.
Yep.
Do you have a use for? And it took a couple of weeks for them even to get it back to me, but. Bottom line. They didn't, they 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 were able to. Well, the city fire department didn't have a use of, because although two of their firehouses were destroyed. None of their apparatus, with the exception of an ambulance, were even damaged. They have four volunteer fire departments down there that complement the city department. One of their, and I was in conversations with their chief. One of their, their, their uh. Two firehouses was destroyed, one of them had four tankers in it. They were out on a call, helping the city department. All of their tanker trucks and a firehouse was totally one hundred percent destroyed. So they thought they may have a need for our truck. But when they found out it only had, and I know you said it had a fifteen hundred gallon. They they were looking for a. They were looking for a two thousand gallon.
Yep.
And so it was, it was too, long story short, they don't have a need. What we're gonna do, Catherine. I I don't remember what year it was, remember we sold. Uh, another fire truck for five thousand to a a. Fire department down in Georgia, I think it was.
Yeah.
We're gonna use that same advertising facility. Before we break that truck down or take the tank off or whatever. I told Chris to, she's putting all that together, we're gonna advertise that truck. I was contacted by a fire department down in Florida. Word between departments, even an interstate spread real quickly that we had this coming offline. Um, there, there's a uh. Fire facility, a small department, facilitates a little less than a thousand residents. That's working, they lost their fire truck and it's, they're working off a flatbed with a plastic five hundred gallon water tank on the back. So they asked us if we would consider giving them the truck. And I said, I don't have the ability to do that, it's a process we'd have to go through. But I said, once we do advertise, we're gonna, we'll certainly. Let you know about that and 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 send you a copy of the ad, so. There's some interest in that truck. How much money we're gonna get back, I have no idea. What I intend, if if Mayfield needed it, what I intended to do was bring it to our board. Make a recommendation to the Board of Finance, and of course, we would have had to. To go to the town meeting on it, but we would have had to donate that truck to Mayfield, but that that didn't work its way out.
I, um. Are you working with the fire chief on this? Because he, I would think that he has some contacts as well.
Oh, he does, he he's aware of it. I talked to, I, uh, Paul Varga, who's one of the officers in the department, I've let Paul know what I was doing and. And uh, Tom also, that there was at least consideration of it.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so that covers capital improvements.
The new truck, I don't, I don't remember if I mentioned to you, but. We have not taken delivery, it's, it's been prepared. Uh, it was gonna be delivered yesterday, but.
Right.
Joe wanted to make sure that it was not. On any wet roads while it was coming down here, because we still have to internally undercoat it, whatever. So they anticipate as long as a nice clear day tomorrow like it is today, I mean, Monday. We'll take delivery of the truck.
Oh, that's nice. Someone should take some pictures so they can go into the.
Yeah, yeah, I asked, I asked Joe to do that, but I I intend on going down there, so I'll do that.
Good. Okay.
Uh, you'll also notice on the school bus. I took that out of a capital expense and I put that into ARPA.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm now looking at the second sheet of this. I really only looked at the first sheet, and what I see is the van replacement is thirty thousand. And they, we put, oh, because it got put under ARPA stuff, okay, so. And in the. And in the next year, so.
Well, ARPA, I think, is only in next year, they don't need one this year.
The, okay, so, actually, bear with me, I'm just looking at the. So that when I look at the next page of this. It's not highlighted. The column isn't highlighted because these ones are. So these ones. Again, are not considered part of the plan.
They're not considered part of uh. Impacting the mill rate, these are outside.
Uh, no, the other ones don't impact the mill rate either.
Well, if we take, yeah, if we, if town meeting, but they have to, they have to go to a vote on with the.
No, no. The capital improvement plan doesn't impact the mill rate.
No, but it has to go to a town meeting. It it will be approved at the same time that the town budget.
Bear with me, I'm not talking about that, I'm looking at, at this point, I'm looking at the yellow part. Yellow highlighted. That does not. I don't know why we see local support taxes in there, because that is not supposed to be in there.
I'm sorry, where where are you looking, Catherine?
Capital Improvement Plan is not paid for through taxes. Is paid for out of the CNR, Town Aid Road, whatever. I don't know who put local support taxes in there, but that's not what's supposed to be in there. Capital Improvement is almost like a different animal. It doesn't affect the mill rate. It's, the monies that are used for capital improvements are monies that we know we're receiving, but not from the town.
But it's voted on the same time that the budget is voted on.
Yes, but it's voted on, but it's voted on as a, it's almost like a separate thing. Yeah, so please have that line taken out.
And which one are you looking at?
I'm down under suggested funding on the first page. It says low, you go down five, five or six rows, it says local support taxes. I don't know who put that in there, but that doesn't belong there.
See, mine, mine has blank on it.
There's no, no amount.
There's no dollar. Be out of there totally.
Absolutely, absolutely, because again, we need people to, you know, all these years, we've been telling them. The capital improvement plan does not affect the mill rate. Okay. So that means, okay, and then we'll go to the second page, we have. ARPA. Expenses, so. And with these. I'm trying to figure out, is this page going into the budget book? Yes, it is. So I don't understand. Kind of sort of what this is. So the tennis court resurfacing, for example. That.
We, we.
Let me, let me rephrase that, the first page is everything except ARPA funded.
Correct.
The second page. Would be. Government services, you know, what is, what's being looked at for government services?
Under ARPA.
So. Um, the uh, NICOG, the ARPA admin, that's not a capital expense. It's not a capital uh, thing, that's, that is uh. Under what we pay ARPA, I mean, it would not be. It's not a capital thing. First of all, it's not over ten thousand dollars.
Are we back on the first page?
I'm on the second page, looking at our, under ARP expenses. The bottom item, just before the word subtotal on ARP expenses, NICOG, ARPA admin shouldn't be in there. Let me just see what else this other stuff is. Radio purpose purchases. Okay. And then we have government services under there, so I'm trying to figure out that, that's got the school bus in it. But we already have the school bus. In. And I'm sorry, the year is the proposed year, so that shouldn't be, I don't think that should be in there.
The school bus was on the first page under this year's budget, we're taking delivery of that.
No, school bus, there's a school bus, okay, this year's budget, but you're saying that. Why don't we show one for next year? On the first page, we should have.
Next, well, because it's not in the capital improvement, it's it's gonna be paid under through ARPA.
You're gonna buy a school bus through ARPA?
The next two. It's what I'm proposing, I mean, we, we haven't agreed on any of those ARPA things.
I get, I get that, but I think what we're gonna have is we're gonna have some confusion here, so that's why I was kind of looking at it, to go, okay.
The the school buses are in our budget. And, but this year, because of the availability of the ARPA. I am suggesting we move them over and cover the next two under that.
So what I would, so what I would do is, first of all, government services. Isn't the installation of the gas tank, the. Other stuff, for expenses in first that it's a. Uh, a regular expense. So my confusion is. We're saying. Here are these items that we think we want to pay for with ARPA in this first block. And then it says government services, and we're saying these are these other items we want to pay for with ARPA. So, why are they in two separate blocks?
Well, it's just because in the golden rule. They were, they were in a, in a broad definition of things, they were using the term governmental services. And when we're doing our justification, I'm sure we're gonna have to come up with. With an explanation of the use of of an accounting of ours. I thought as a general term, using general services. Would put us in in, in line with the language that the feds are asking for.
Are they looking for something called ARPA expenses?
No.
Can we give these other items that are down here, that are in the first block, some kind of a header?
I I think if 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 we're more comfortable with it, we could take out ARPA expenses. And and. Replace that with governmental services and in print, put ARPA.
Perfect. Um, what I was thinking is. When do we think we're gonna have the town meet, a public hearing to talk about ARPA and then. If we're going to have a town meeting about it.
In my mind, in my mind, Catherine, I was hoping, and and. I was thinking perhaps using our owl pro. And 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 having that one of our, you know, a meeting along those lines. But I was, I was thinking probably because of what's going on with the budget and presentation and meetings and everything. Doing that sometime between the middle of March and end of March.
I'm thinking that, you know. Having a public hearing. Of specifically about ARPA. End of March, bear with me. And then. As, coming from the public hearing. Putting those items. On the capital improvement plan and putting the suggested funding for those items under. You know, putting ARPA as the suggested funding, so it's all one plan. And the ones that are ARPA. You could have the breakdown if you wanted to. But then what you have is, then they're voting on it. As part of the referendum. So you've done the public hearing, you've taken their input. And a really good public hearing, you know, where you're taking all input and talking about these items. You know, and you know how we're able to use the money. And uh, and and we have to make a really good case for why these things are important to do now.
Which I think we can.
Yeah, I think we can.
I don't think any of these are pie in the eye or, you know, I.
No, I don't, I don't either.
We could justify all of them. I I think that's certainly worth our consideration, I think that's probably a legitimate idea. The the only thing I was thinking on some of this stuff, and I I'll define it with you before we get together a week from Wednesday. Postponing it till May. We're we're running into problems with supply sources and getting things done, even on contracting. And some of these things, I was hoping to get as early a jump on being able to actually make a commitment to. As we could, and and maybe. Maybe it makes sense just to wait till May on it, but I I. I think that might be a good idea, Catherine, let's toss it around.
I think it's a, I think it's a lot.
Kill two birds with one stone.
I think it's fairer too, I think what it is, is you don't have, you know, kind of a half stacked or stacked town meeting. Where people have, uh, you know, the loudest voices are the ones that carry. Instead of having something that, you know, is a literally a referendum. For people to make the decision and you have an opportunity for more people to weigh in.
Yeah, I I'm, and when, by the time we have our special meeting the next time, I'll um. Have a couple of other suggestions, but I I know one of the things that. Is is in ARPA possibilities for funding.
Yeah.
Lack of a better term, a lot of the towns are using them as heroes pay.
What did you call that?
Heroes pay, hero.
Heroes pay, yeah, I've read, I've.
And and, you know, there, some of the towns are talking about their public works department, who were working right through the pandemic.
Yep.
Fire department.
Yep.
I'm example, I think would be Martha up at the school, the school nurse.
Yeah.
Um, how to come up with that, we're told, as I read the ARPA definitions.
Yeah.
That we could compensate, if if that was the way we go, between a dollar and thirteen dollars an hour. If we wanted to do it on an hourly basis somehow. I don't, I'm not real sure of the mechanism, but I. I I wanna, I I think we had a brainstorm and see if there's something we can do.
I'm not against, uh, I want to be clear, I'm not against heroes pay. However, the uh, people who were doing the work during storms, et cetera, et cetera, were well compensated. They got special pay, you know, they got an increased.
They get their, their normal special compensation was put in.
Yeah.
Whether it's time and a half or if it was on a holiday, you know. Yeah.
I thought that the heroes pay was really supposed to be about COVID. But I'm, I could be wrong.
Well, again, they've lightened up on a lot of those terms and. I I'm not sure, but I ju- I just throw it out, I think it's something we could think of.
Yeah, because I think about our fire department, our, you know, ambulance service going and picking up people who had COVID. To take them to the hospital and things like that, and that is very related to COVID.
Well, Roger, I don't.
Clearing the roads during a storm is not.
I don't know if you heard, heard Roger, but he was just saying that. It it could turn divisive if it wasn't done in.
Yes.
Proper method, and certainly that would be opposite of what we're trying to accomplish. I I just threw that out. You know.
Yeah, I also had thought about too, you know, how do you make those decisions about who gets it and and who gets left out?
Yeah.
Uh, because Martha has been awesome, just awesome at the school. Uh, but I suspect that there's probably some other people that were working with her in some capacity, I don't know. Okay, so what I was thinking on this uh, is if in fact we did end up making these ARPA purchases. Part, I'm sorry, uh, ARPA funded purchases, part of the capital improvement plan that's voted on at referendum. Um, then what we would do is we would take the ones that we had numbers for. Now estimates for and have them in the column. And the other ones. I don't know how to deal with that, senior center, winners, windows and doors, that kind of thing. Um, those ones. Could be. Uh, noted specially and. Those ones would ultimately, if we don't have any numbers for them to get approved by the time this is put forth to the public. For voting, then we would at least have it on the list of potentials. And then those would be approved at town meeting. Could be approved at town meeting later.
Yeah. No, I think that's good food, I think we have a little while to make up. Finalize our strategy on that, but I I think that that's worth considering.
Are we supposed, when are we supposed to give the capital improvement plan to the Board of Finance? Don't we do that with our?
Minus the ARPA?
No, I wasn't even thinking minus the ARPA, I'd wanna see it on there so they could see it.
I was gonna try to present them. Thursday, at least for for a working document, and this is what the recommendation with our committee has been to our board, and we have yet to finalize our budget.
Okay, so with that, let's make sure we have the second page kind of cleaned up. I would think, um, so that. When we go back to them, if we go back to them with all those other things on there, they're not gonna say, well, hey, you didn't show us that before. Because that is some of the attitude I've I've certainly encountered with that board.
Yeah, I. You know, maybe we want to just do the the second page and say, um. Uh, projected. Possible funding or something along, you know, come up with a general term. Because some of these have already been like, for instance, a truck is in there, that's already been paid for. Uh, and approved by town meeting.
Yeah, and that one, you could, you know, there's. That one's already in there, and the existing building conditions.
Yeah.
With CES is in there. And that one, that's the, that's not existing building conditions, that is. Um, assessment. Of building conditions. It would be assess town building. Conditions, something like that. And the room, just a reminder, it includes a fire station. On eighty nine. Yeah, but definitely not just presenting the uh. First page, but making sure they see the other stuff so that they don't feel blindsided when we.
Yeah.
Come back. Okay, good, it's it's great to have the list.
Yeah, it's, you know, as I said, it's a work in progress, but I I think we're getting there.
Um, the other thing I just suggested, it's only, it's a minor thing, it's one of the things that always used to make me nuts, um, is uh. When this gets sent, if this gets sent electronically to them in any way. This uh, capital improvement list, that is set up so that it's printable, you know, that's already got the boundaries on it. Because right now it doesn't.
Yep.
And it'll fit on, make sure it all fits on the page. Okay.
Alright, to review, I mean, we're talking about a Board of Finance meeting then on February seventeenth, seven o'clock.
Yep.
Okay. Alright.
And we're talking about getting together again.
Okay. Uh, and then us getting together. Uh, us getting together on the twenty third. You said the Wednesday after the meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
And, um. For that meeting, do you want to have it at night, you, you want to have it during the day, what's the availability of?
Hopefully coming off my job here by the, next week, so I'll be hopefully available during the day.
Uh, the only reason I, I always think at six o'clock on Wednesday is because it's been working well with the, the capital committee.
Okay.
But I, I'm not, I'll be here regardless, if you want to do it earlier, I, it'll actually just be a work session for us.
Yeah.
You want to do it at four?
I, I don't care, I'm fine anytime, I didn't know how, what Roger's schedule was.
See how you, if you finished up your job.
Yeah, six would probably work okay for you, right?
Roger?
Roger, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, I mean, four o'clock would probably would be fine for the twenty-third.
Shoot for twenty-third at four.
You okay with that?
Yep. Yep.
Okay.
Hey, all I've got going on are horses.
A new horse, huh?
Yes, he's half Friesian and half Perchram.
Whoa.
He's a big boy.
Big boy, yeah.
He's, he's a big boy, he's got, uh, two hundred and fifty pounds on my thoroughbred.
Wow.
Of course, I, we had surgery on the thoroughbred the other day on his eyelid to insert a. Catheter to put medication into his eye. So my husband and I are, uh, bonding down at the barn, dealing with that. So. Yeah, and, and we, we tried doing it ourselves for the better part of a week. And the horse figured out that it doesn't feel very good, and he's not happy with that, so they had to come in, it was amazing watching the vet work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, well, I think we had a plan, I think it's been a good meeting.
Yep.
Um. I, I don't know if I forwarded it to you, but Craig did, because there's been some ongoing debate. Between the Board of Finance, Cheryl, myself, I mean, I've asked Cheryl to verify these numbers, I haven't got them back. I don't think I sent this to you, and that, and that's why I wanted her to get her input, but. Uh, Craig had done a, uh, there's no date on this, but it was this week. He, he had taken a look at his interpretation of what the balances were in the non-lapsing versus if they do the two percent and that. Um, I'll forward this on to you folks, just to take a look at it, I don't think I've done that yet. But he also addresses, besides the non-lapse, and he does the, uh, uh, CNR fund. And, and a couple of other things with, with numbers.
Craig looked at our CNR fund?
In our general discussions, yeah, yeah, with what we were showing as an accounting.
So the, uh, I would expect that Cheryl would have the numbers for what's in non-lapsing.
I would have thought so too, but we were getting like, I was getting, and, and we had a meeting. And five minutes before the, the meeting, I was presenting new numbers, and I was getting three sets of numbers, so. I told everybody, I want us all to be looking at the same numbers.
Yeah, well, first of all, for CNR, for CNR, um, it would be whatever the audit said.
Yeah. Well, I thought so too, and that's how I originally, originally I had a figure of four hundred and fifty-nine thousand and change.
Yeah.
And I presented that to the Capital Committee. And then I was corrected that, no, that there had been appropriations made out of that, that weren't in the figures that, that I originally got, so then we. And that's how we ended up looking at three or four sets of numbers, I said, hey, guys, it's time we all looking at the same numbers and at least can agree. So that's, that's what we're fine tuning.
Well, CNR is, um, again, all, like, all you have to do is, I know it sounds simple, but it should be simple. Is look at what the audited figure was at the end of the fist, last fiscal year. Which we have, and any purchases that have been made from CNR. Those, those purchases would have had to have been approved by the Board of Finance. So, it's as simple as looking at the minutes, but it's also in our system. Should be very obvious, because those purchases were made through that.
That's, that's what I thought, but.
But now we got a new system.
There's been.
I would, I'd stick with that thinking, Bill. I would stick with that thing, I would stick with that thinking, that's what it should be.
Yeah.
So if it's not being done that way, then there's a concern. I do, hey, do we have a grand, a grand list figures?
She's working on that, I'm hoping to have it in hand by Monday.
Okay.
Answer is.
You may get asked, you may get asked that question.
It's a work in progress, I had to grant the two-week extension to her.
Did, did, uh, did we ever get a value on the farmer's exemption? Going up to two hundred thousand, did we ever get that number?
I don't believe she gave us that number, but I think I mentioned to you, they've withdrawn all of that, those recommendations, so it's a muted issue at this point.
Yeah, on that, on that, um, if it's okay to speak a little bit about that at this moment.
We can speak, if we can turn that in with the budget at all, but I, I just remind us, it's a special meeting, so we're kind of limited on what we can discuss.
And the only thing is, is with the budget, the, uh, remember, they asked for two things. They asked for increasing the abatement, which would be part of the budget. And then they asked for changes to the language in our ordinance. Increasing the, uh, abatement. Should be looked at individually. That's what it is, it's just increasing the abatement on the farm machinery.
Yep.
Okay, and, uh, so you can do that. Separate from the other, these don't have to be done together.
Yep.
The two things, so the first one, I do feel that we should increase the abatement, because it gives opportunity to the. Uh, to the farmers to be able to expand their operations or purchase that, that, uh, you know, new tractor that's gonna. Or whatever, that's going to cost them, you know, a hundred thousand dollars. And what we saw was that the tax impact was relatively small. So, I, I'm, I'm actually in favor of that particular change. Because I think that helps any farmer who is trying to expand their operations.
Yep.
Cover needs to replace something.
Uh, I, I agree with that, I, I, I think our board in the town. Has had that intention and the intent has been from the beginning, encourage, help farmers wherever we can. Without major impacts on our taxes, and I think we've done that, and I, I think this whole thing got clouded. Because of accusations of conflicts of interest and other things, but I think.
You know what?
Everybody has, is, let's help the farmers as best and, as we can, and I, I certainly would be supportive of an adjustment in the abatement levels.
So not only, not only that, um, we have, we have the power to do that. You know, we don't need anything else from them to do that, other than to get some more information from our assessor about the tax impact.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a note, I, I.
Yeah.
Been trying not to bug Kara any more than I, I usually bug her, but.
Yeah, but she should, she has already looked at this, because people have asked her questions about it. So I think there is actually not just one farm in town that would be taking advantage of it, but I think there would be possibly two at this point in time.
Yeah, turns out there's more than one farm already, but.
Good. Good, and I think, how many farms do we have, seven, eight?
I think it's a, a number, and, and we just got some, I just sent something down to her. Got some correspondence from one of the Noltons, that they want to start up their dairy farm again. So we, we may have a, another operation joining us, so.
So, and we don't need the recommendations to act upon that.
No, no, we don't need it, and I, I, I for one am in favor of acting on it.
Yep, once we have the information from the assessor.
Yeah, and, and, you know, we've already, yeah, once we have that from Kara.
All right.
Yeah, and.
And then the other.
I don't want to throw any, it's, it's, what I've already heard, it's, it's minimal.
Yeah.
As it stands, and, and doubling it is no big deal either. For us, for, I mean, in the big picture of the town, and if we can help an individual farmer, um, I think that's.
Absolutely.
Really is, so.
Yeah, so I don't think that, you know, we don't have to delay that, and we don't have to, you know, have them ask for it again. Um, they have, you know, other issues to deal with, I also, um, when all is said and done, there, you know, there isn't a project. That's been brought forth that people are complaining about, you know, just, there isn't, it's not real yet. Okay, so, that's a whole different debate.
Yeah, and I, I think unfortunately, that's what ended up clouding.
Yeah.
What we're talking about, the abatement, and, and that, that was unfortunate.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, so, you know, we can, we can kind of, you know, turn that. A bit, so that people are not staying focused on that, because that's not a real thing.
Yeah.
If they want to deal with it, when, if it becomes a real thing, they can deal with it then.
Absolutely.
I agree.
Okay, thank you.
All right, folks, well, thank you very much, and, um, appreciate you taking the time out of your Saturday morning.
All right, can I move we adjourn?
Absolutely, is there a second?
Yes, there is.
All in favor, seeing if anybody's saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I've got ten fifty-four, is that what you got?
Okay. I've got ten fifty-six.
Hold on, let me check, let me check.
Wait. Take care.
All right.
You too.
Later.